We've got three matters on the meeting today. All three have been on at least two or three times. The public areas were left open for each at the last meeting for Irvington, Rosenberg, and Freed. So, at this point, you know, we'll open, and obviously, we'll go into a public hearing on each, see if there's any public comment, and I would recommend at that point, closing the hearing. And, you know, we've built pretty good records on each of these, so, you know, I think, assuming everyone's comfortable with the facts received, that we can potentially start voting and going through the elements of use variances or area variances, depending on which one. So, to start, we have Irvington Estates. This one's a non-conforming use, so although there is, would otherwise be area variances here, we have to go through the use variance test for an increase of twenty-five, over twenty-five percent. For the building expansion, it's three percent to twenty-eight percent. So, you have to determine whether that's substantial, fits with the character of the neighborhood, etc. The next one is the lot coverage, it's supposed to be fifteen percent, and the applicant's looking for thirty-three percent. And then, the final one is the separation, my belief this is building to death, if I remember correctly. Would that be estimates? That, I thought the estimates were for Freed.
Freed.
Yeah, it cut off like a foot of the debt. So, this one, we don't have any further information, so, you know, my recommendation would be just to ask questions that you need to, as far as the use variance test, to see if you're comfortable with voting on each of these tonight, and then moving forward on a vote. For Rosenberg, this is the one, if you remember, initially, it was to have a travel trailer for more than four months, and then he came back last month, looking for a hunting and fishing cabin. There's a couple different easements on the property for sewer and water that make it, I think, if not impossible to build a single-family home pretty darn close. So, I think that's gonna, you know, should be something that's taken into account, listen. You know, because really, the issue that we would be looking at here is if anything happens, and I know a couple of weekends ago, there was issue with water in town, and Ken and Hayden had to go through and try to find leaks, and, I mean, you can, depending on where the pipes are, where you think there might be a leak, if it happens on one of these easements, it could be a situation where, you know, the house would just be getting its foundation torn apart on a semi-regular basis. So, I mean, that's a big issue here. I don't know, Greg, if you have any more on? He is, yes. Yeah, so I was just saying, as far as building like a single-family house, which would be an approved use, I think it would be, if not impossible, it'd be incredibly impractical.
So, you got an email, you got an email with an updated, maybe you didn't see it. Jen, Jen, Jen sent out a new email stating that the agenda can, can, uh...
Yeah, yeah, the updated agenda, that was the, she copied and pasted that from the month before. We updated the agenda before we got more to the paper, didn't we? So, so... Where on that stuff?
So, they're kind of like right through the middle.
So...
So, the, the...
You can't build over those pipes.
He can, but then he's up, he can legally build over the pipes, but then, then he has to sign a waiver with the town that, that they may have to ding his house off, destroy his house to access the pipe if need be. We don't know if that's ever gonna happen. The pipes, the water line's pretty deep in the ground. Ideally, the lot, so the lot would meet, meets the minimum criteria that you could fit, fit a house on for well of stuff. But the problem is, is we would have to probably push the house one way or the other, in order to keep away from the water and sewer lines, which would mean he would need variances for setbacks on the side, rear yard setbacks, maybe a variance for the distance from the river. So, he, not that he bought the property with the intention that he was gonna build a house on it, but he wanted to, you know, if he could build a house on it, I told him it would be challenging to build a house on it, but, uh, he's looking to keep a small little building down there for recreation. And the camper thing really wasn't gonna work out. We, he was looking for something more permanent, like the cabin, which is a small square foot, up to eight hundred square feet, I think it is, the cabin? Up to eight hundred, well, up to seven or eight hundred square foot, and it would be, uh, it, it wouldn't get like a CO like a house. It would literally be a place where you go hang out on your property. It doesn't get a CO, but you can hook it into water and sewer if you want to.
Can we grant him with, with the caveat that you can't build over the pipes?
Yeah.
Somebody in? Somebody wants to come in? Alright, so... Yes, we could, but I'm sure we could. I mean, I'm not really sure. I'm sure you can situate the cabin if you talk to him more about where, yeah. Where it's, uh, since it's not be, it's not gonna be like a, yes, so...
We never saw a certain...
We did.
We did.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll see that when it comes up the vote, but, I mean, ideally, the travel trailer over the, over the thirty days and the hunting and fishing cabins are only allowed in, in, in ag and rec zones, and I believe this is our zone, what was the, what was it? This is in our zone, but it's funny, because all the property around it is in an rec zone. So, it's one of those cases where it's like, the only reason this property became an R-zone is because they built the development next to it, and they zoned it the same as the development next to it. But the property right across the street and next to it is, uh, West Park is next to it, correct, yes.
So, it's really, even with the hunting and fishing cabin, still need a character with surrounding, like, so... There's a lot of things in mind.
Alright, and then we have... Number three.
No.
Alright, so, the last one, Freed, if you remember, has to do with a deck that was already built, and it's about fourteen feet away from the deck next to it, and it needs to be fifteen feet, so we've got about a foot of, uh, overexposure on that end, so it's an area variance looking to reduce the setback from the fifteen to fourteen. So, you know, again, we'll have to, this one, go through the area variance test of whether it has an desirable change in the neighborhood. The benefit can be sought in another way. That's where you saw the three cost estimates, I think ranging from sixty-two hundred to seven thousand dollars to, uh, remove that foot of deck. Yeah, so about, um, six and seven to seven thousand.
So, to, to sum this up, this is a new development that was built over the last couple of years. The people got all excited when they moved in here and started making their decks bigger and doing stuff, and, uh, yeah, they, they, they generally, they learn after the first couple of people get caught, but they, they, they just come in all excited to move into these developments, and they're like, oh, we want a bigger deck here, a bigger deck here. They tell a contractor to, to do this, and, and they don't realize that the town has setback requirements for the decks. So, this is a, this is a local law that we passed for building separation. It's not, it doesn't, it's not fire code, it's not New York State Fire Code separations. It's a local law that we passed for all our residential developments. And how they wrote the code, and it's, it's, it's very, and I, I was explaining this to Dylan today. So, the building separation says, it's written out that there shall never be any buildings closer than thirty-one feet apart, thirty-one feet edge to edge. But if you have good fire flow, which means you pretty much have fire hydrants in your development, you're allowed to reduce that building separation to twenty-five feet. So, most of our developments have fire hydrants, because they're in the municipal water and sewer, so they put all our houses at twenty-five feet building separation. So, the houses are twenty-five feet, twenty-five feet, twenty-five feet. Now, the code says, the only thing you're allowed to build between that twenty-five-foot separation are decks of five feet on either side of the building, which leaves you the fifteen-foot clear in the middle. If, there's no specific code section that says fifteen feet separation. It says that you can't build more than five-foot of decks on either house, so if you have twenty-five, twenty-five, you end up with fifteen left clear in between. So, we've always used that as a rule of thumb, that fifteen foot, that you can't have any decks closer than that number. Because a lot of the houses, when you come around the corners, the houses are further away apart. So, some people's decks, some people are allowed to build bigger decks to still keep that fire separation the same. So, Molly, when we first wrote the law, we, we, it was, nobody could build more than five-foot of decks, but some people had a lot, and there wasn't a house for three hundred feet next to them. How do you tell that person he can't build more than a five-foot deck off the side of his house? So, we, we adapted the code over the years to tell everybody, pretty much, in these development situations, draw an imaginary line between the houses, because it's all common area, and go, everybody goes seven and a half feet from that imaginary line down the center between the houses, and you can't build any closer than that seven and a half feet, so nobody at any point will end up closer than fifteen feet, if that makes any, did I confuse anybody? Did I confuse anybody? So, the reason... No, no, this one, this one is just an open deck that the contractor built it a foot too big on the side, and, and he's asking... It's fourteen feet, deck to deck. Not crazy. The reason why we have the fifteen feet is not for fire jumping from deck to, or house to house. It's mostly for fire access, for firemen to come through with their hoses and ladders and stuff like that. So, this guy, this specific gentleman is asking for a foot reduction in the, in the, in the, uh, in the code for this specific deck. So, it's a quiet night, Mary. So, that's the, that's the, that's the, that's the code. So, when anybody wants to build anything closer than twenty-five foot to another structure, twenty, building to building, twenty-five feet, it goes against our local code for the building separations. Where the rest of the government uses, or the rest of the state uses, unless they have a local law, they use what they call ISO standards on building separations, which is the amount of fire flow. They calculate that by the amount of water that comes out of the fire hydrant for fire services. And depending on how good the pressure is, the closer you're allowed to build structures.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, based on what you know, would this generally fit the state fire code?
Yeah, it wouldn't be against the state fire. It wouldn't be any, it wouldn't be any... This specific variance, by granting this variance, would not go against any state fire codes or fire separations. It would be strictly a, uh...
Well, what, two, two questions about that. Um, one, you mentioned water pressure, and you've been having a lot of issues with water pressure in the town.
Correct. So, currently, we're having water pressure issues in South Fallsburg. This, this specific place is, is in Woodburn, if that matters, uh, the, the South Fallsburg stuff, we're, we're fixed, we're, we're figuring out the, uh...
The, the, so, it's not, we shouldn't anticipate that. And the second question that I have is, you mentioned that this is a development for a lot of people, like, very excitedly taking some sort of like privileges to continue to extend and build. Do you feel that there are other ways of mitigating that happening in the future? So that we don't, you know, if we, for example, if we were to approve this request, it's not sending a message like, go ahead and build, you know, that that's gonna be fine, or...
I wish I could say that, but, uh, it's... No, nobody would notice it, they would, no, no, no. Correct.
I would say this is important, because we always have to be, who's the right person, what you...
Yeah.
And, you know, with all of these things, uh, it's, it's a question of, uh, we have a lot of, I know. We're holding it low, we do not have a master plan, as a matter of fact.
We try to keep up, we're, we're, there's, there's, there's too much, there's too much going on, there's too much going on. Even if we had, even if I had a staff of fifty people, we still wouldn't catch everything that, that, I mean, because I don't know how many people are in the town, but there's a lot of people come up in this town. There's a lot of houses and a lot of contractors working. There's, it would be impossible to stay on top of everybody doing everything. We, we miss a lot, but we catch a lot.
But, but if we had something...
Yeah. Correct.
It is seven oh four. Should we start this meeting?
Yes. Okay, so, we'll open the meeting by my, uh, reiterating the, the question that whatever sided upon, whatever, I don't really understand, can I just...
Yeah, you can, yeah.
That, you know, there's nothing, is there enough proof that are guarantees that the fact that they have met on various occasions, and the one particular, uh, let's talk about the, um, as a, so therefore, better be known that there's, there are no guarantees of proof, even if we were to pass a, uh, grant a variance, uh, other things could still be outstanding and possible to, actually, we believe that. Um, and, uh, we'll then move on to the minutes of the meeting, um, and see whether we want to approve, uh, the minutes of the meeting.
I don't think, can I maybe be corrected?
Of course.
Cool.
I'm sorry?
You've had a round of time, and my name will contact Mr. Marsh, or...
Oh, yeah. Well, because everyone feels so...
Yeah.
Close to you, it's, it's intimacy, so we're just calling you Marsh, you know, but, no, but we should actually put it forward.
I'll see if the minutes were not fully comprehensible, or if they were inaccurate, instead of going through and changing all of those. I just wanna say that for the record and say, um, rushing through the minutes.
Okay, I would, um, would just, you've mentioned before that there are technologies, I don't, are we using them? Uh, I mean, I don't see any improvement.
The Zoom, the Zoom records the, the conversations, word for word, so...
We have an oral transcript, but it sums up what we get in the written transcript.
Whoever, whoever is listening in private is misinterpreting what they do.
I think it's a computer, it's computer-generated, honestly, but we do have a guy, we have a transcriptionist who does the, the...
Is it, is it totally better software, or?
Well, we'll look into it, yeah.
But even just naming those captions, I think, an improvement, and then it's actually just a matter of...
Because I, I really see the rest of it in our whole sentences, and I, I mean... I, I think we, I understand, we can recollect, and based on recollections, maybe we can get over the hump of the problem, but we need to work on this.
Yeah.
We need some, you guys...
I'm sure that, and I know that at one point, they were using this software. I don't know if they still are, but I'm happy to make additional recommendations to support the clarity of the meeting notes.
Yeah, enough of the planning board, when, and anyone's talking, you see on the bottom of the screen, it's transcribing it. So, I think the transcriptionist listens to it, and then has that transcript, and then games out the minutes from there, but I think part of the issue is just, uh, volume, because sometimes the hour just doesn't pick anything up, so you'll have just gaps in actually what's being recorded and heard.
Good reminder for us to see better. That said, I do motion to approve, uh, last month's meeting notes.
Second? You want me?
Well, is that a second?
Okay, so, all of the...
I pull for both, okay, both.
Hi.
Hi. And just, uh, for anything voted on today, we'll need to be unanimous, because it's the majority of five members before, and so since we have three, uh, just to keep in mind.
You hear something, you feel something in your leg, you know why?
The first, um, I'm Irvington Estates.
Right, so...
And we're doing all the public...
We are ready now, we're gonna do all the foods at once, right?
Get up?
Yep. Well, not at once, one after the other.
Public hearing first, and then, as opposed to, uh, public hearing on one, each two, then a vote, we'll then hold.
I mean, I just stopped the public, and I had...
And then we'll then do both, after having, uh, closed the public hearing on research, then we'll have a vote.
Are you doing all first?
You're, you're on the phone, right?
Um, you're removing some data, and that's the Irvington Estates, Irvington Estates, looking for two variances. Been there two other times already in the past, uh, for use variances, two. Use variances want to spend the twenty-five percent required lot coverage, thirty-three percent is currently at twenty-nine, thirty-two point nine. Um, to, to reduce the required lot coverage to fifteen percent, right, then, to make the building more twenty-five percent better to twenty-eight percent, and to reduce building separations to sixteen point five percent. Um, the board has done asked for financials, which we did submit.
Even?
Double checking.
Well, everybody's looking. Do you wanna open this up to public comment?
Yep.
If you could just restate it, because it wasn't a little bit slower, so, we, uh, we're moving from twenty-eight?
No, the required, we're moving the required lot coverage is supposed to be at fifteen percent. We're moving, max, not fifteen percent, right now it's currently at thirty-two point nine, to make it thirty-three. Um, the building, the building out extended more than twenty-five percent of the, the original building size, will extend to twenty-eight percent. Um, we did at that time submit, uh, Jen requested to submit, um, what we'll look at is twenty-five percent, which I believe we're okay with it, the board would... And the building separation, it will be around, probably, at supposedly twenty-five percent, it's currently at seventeen percent. This is sixteen point five, I think, the building's on an angle, that's, you know, closer to the building. It was a lot of performance. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's not a forming, public comment, so...
And so, the financials were sent in an email on the eighth of July.
We did receive them.
Yeah, they had a comparative, uh, as...
And, um, either company of what it would cost to bring that back for, just trying to establish a proper, right, do it.
So, to...
We, we received it, I definitely...
So, to inform people, to clarify some stuff, uh, so, the lot coverage for non-conforming bungalow colonies was set at fifteen percent by our zoning when they did the zoning change two thousand seven, no, was it, was it?
I think it was two thousand seven.
Two thousand seven, two thousand seven, and then we revamped the code in two thousand eighteen. Uh, this, this place was built prior to that, so they're currently at, their current lot coverage is at thirty-three, to make it confusing, is it thirty-two ninety percent? It was double what, what was allowed in the, when we made it non-conforming, so, uh, they were grandfathered in at the thirty to thirty-two percent. So, he, he's, he's asking for technically one per, point of a percent lot coverage increase. Uh, but we have to list it as from, from fifteen to thirty-three percent, because that's actually what the ask is, but he didn't, he didn't create the fourteen point, whatever, fourteen point nine percent increase. It was already a pre-existing condition, so, uh, the owner of this, of this unit. Uh, yeah. Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to speak on, uh, Irvington Estates? Raise your hand. There's a raise your hand thing on the thing, if not...
If you go to reactions, there's a place that says raise hands. Otherwise, it doesn't fix.
Mary, we're good?
I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think since this is the, uh, third time this has gone on, that the board's comfortable, I think you can close out the public hearing, and then, once we get back to this, uh, you know, uh, vote on the variances at that point, if you're comfortable.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Hold on a second, hold on. Are you on mute, Jim? Can you hear me, Jim?
Yes, I can hear you.
Alright, you're on.
I don't have really a lot to say about this, but if you gentlemen don't speak towards the mic, you fade out so bad that we can't only hear part of your conversations.
Okay, let me see if I can turn on the other microphone here.
Thank you.
I'm trying something different.
I changed microphones, does that help at all, Jim?
You guys sound much better now, and if I understood correctly, what you were saying is that because of the zone changes that happened in two thousand seventeen, two thousand, and, um, or earlier than that, this had already been built prior to those changes being put into the new zoning laws. So, that's why, when you look at the, at the, uh, agenda, it looks like they're got a big ask, as it appears to what you heard or what I understood you to say. We're really only changing it by less than one percent from what it really is?
Correct, correct. The, uh, the lot coverage of the, of the place was pre-existing for many years at, at thirty-three, at thirty-two point nine percent. And the variance ask for this project, the increase with these addition that they're gonna be building, would only increase the lot coverage by one-tenth of a percent.
Okay.
To thirty-three, from thirty-two nine to thirty-three, but we have to list it as from fifteen to thirty-three, because the, uh, it's not conforming.
Just as long as the minutes will always record the fact that this was a pre-existing condition, and the zoning board then did not give them this big ask, um, so somebody else doesn't come in and say they want the same thing, because you've already done it, so...
Understood.
Just so it's in the minutes. Thank you, I appreciate your help.
Not oppressive setting, yeah.
Correct. Thank you, Jim.
This is a bump, because I'm not about using anywhere in South Fallsburg. Um, that's, it's not really, it's still no changes, only lots have been changed, bump, kind of, uh...
You know, I want to speak even louder, I know it's hard.
Louder.
Louder, and slower.
Um, this is Bongo County, Bongo Counties are not about used since the, since many years in South Fallsburg, anywhere. Um, this is built in about nineteen ninety, I think, um, when it was about used, then. Not, none of the zone has been changed, the zoning laws have...
The zoning laws were checked, yes.
We need to somehow memorialize that this is a minute change. Um, in reality, even though...
It's there in the record, and also, this is the public, should we wait for the board comment?
Yeah, I think, uh, if we don't have any other comments, then I would recommend closing the, uh, public portion, and then we'll move on to the next, uh, two, and then this will be the first one up, so...
Okay.
Alright.
We gotta vote to close.
Vote to close the public discussion, uh, on this way.
Yes. Uh, second.
Alright.
Alright, baby. Evening, what's up, Jim, again? We have, uh, Mayor Rosenberg. Mayor Rosenberg, we're here, um, he was here two months ago, respecting a travel trailer, uh, for more than, for more than four months. Scott Letterman, I hear today suggested that we go hunting and fishing cabin. When we looked into it, we realized it's a lot, it's a lot smaller than S, being that, uh, travel trailers, four hundred square feet, this hunting and fishing cabin is eight hundred square feet. The minimum building size is twelve hundred square feet, the, our district, which is this. The... He said that for two thirty-nine, asked to be two thirty-nine, came back, um, had some good comments, and had one or two mistakes in it. Going to the board, I guess, I could address. The two thirty-nine had one or two mistakes on it, before I could adjust them. Um, two thirty-nine said that this currently there, not currently there, it's kind of a travel trailer there, and he's gonna be putting again, hunting and fishing cabin there. It's not what's currently there, it's gonna be there, it can be a new...
So, what is there now?
A travel trailer. Keep it at less than four months, and he's got to move every four months. Um, the code also has in about, uh, hunting and fishing cabin, not be living there for more than thirty days in a row. Um, that just, something to make that it's not a permanent residence, this, he has another house on Oral Avenue. This is not gonna be a permanent residence, it's something to fix up the property. This way, he could stop trespassers littering and all that.
Anybody, uh, Jim? Oh, James, hi! There you go, James.
I think, a little difficult understanding everything, but what I'm hearing him say is they want the travel trailer there. I think, a little difficult understanding everything, but what I'm hearing him say is they want the travel trailer there. On a part-time basis, because they want to make sure that uh people don't dump. Uh, dump things in there, so it looks like the property is occupied. Is that what he's saying?
I'm sorry, I didn't speak up loud enough before, um, there is currently a travel trailer there, travel trailer is not allowed to be left there for more than four months. We are currently, we are looking to, he was in front of the board two months ago, to ask for, keep the travel trailer more than four months. As permanent. Um, we changed that and we submitted an application last month to. Allow for a hunting and fishing cabin, the travel trailer will be removed, and they'll be putting in a hunting and fishing cabin instead of the travel trailer. And I hope I was correct.
And that will be.
Larger, to me a larger structure, more towards the conforming. Um, it's not conforming, eight hundred square feet instead of twelve hundred.
So you're going to remove the travel trailer and you're going to put a permanent building there?
Yes.
A hunting and fishing cabin specifically, so it's not a, it's not a residence.
It's the, yeah, it would never be a residence, Jim, it would be a, it would be a non, non. Full-time resident strictly, uh, it wouldn't have to meet any energy code requirements, it would just be able to be occupied thirty days out of the year. Uh, not consecutively more than thirty days, but it wouldn't uh, it would never have a C O, it would never be considered illegal like residence. It would be a uh, like a little hunting cabin or hunting fishing cabin.
And, and the logic of putting something there is in order to be able to establish presence, but in presence. That the obvious problem of trespassing and littering, and other violations in this space.
Let me add in one more thing, um, still with you, one one that brought up about making a short rental. I think we have, as I had a discussion with the client, and we're more than happy to have that as a condition that cannot be a short term rental.
Yes.
Now that you couldn't.
How many of these are in the town already?
We have a handful in the town, probably about four, four or five on property. Where people use them to come up for the weekends and and enjoy their property. Uh, they're not habitable like year round, they uh, some people have wood stoves, they come up for for hunting season and stay in them, but they uh. They are a a taxable, a taxable structure that's on the property, and it's, it's not designed to be a, a. A permanent residence.
Running water in a septic system?
You're allowed to, you're allowed to do a, you're allowed to do a engineer-designed septic if you're on a lot. This lot, he would be able to do water and sewer for the cabin, correct? Yes, he would be able to tie in legally for that.
Thank you.
Through the town, it's. So the, 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 this, this specific lot is not. If we built a house on it, it would be in a very tight. He could technically build a house on it, but then we'd have to worry about all the easements the town has for the water sewer tearing up everything, so. Then this little cabin is not really, they're going to put it in a spot on the property where it's going to leave the town access to our town water and sewer. So it's going to give the town access to the water and sewer. And the guy will still be able to enjoy his property, so. He can, he can have town water sewer if he applies to the town and hooks it up, yes. Yeah, he's not allowed to drill a well or do a septic, yeah, it's correct, he's near the water, so.
But I vote to vote the public comment. All in favor? I'm sorry, I got a child at home.
Great, uh, fine, we were here last month, discussed, I afraid, um, that was built. More than, that was both fourteen feet away from a neighbor's deck, where it's supposed to be fifteen feet, fifteen feet is required there. Um, we did send in for two thirty nine, a few of the two thirty nine left it up to local determination. The. So we did submit, um, I see you did, you did bring this up last time, and did, um, the estimates from three different contractors, reputable contractors around here. Um, they all estimated at sixty five to seven thousand, almost sixty two with that material, but they all estimated at sixty five hundred to seven thousand. Open up the power. Jim, oh, yes, Mary?
Um, Mary Adams. Well, I guess it's. Uh, just comes down to. I mean, could you have known, could they have known the proper zoning? So, uh, dimensions before they built it?
So they adjust that, um, the owner is on Zoom, and.
I mean, really, is what, it doesn't, like, come on, and. This whole thing of, well, let's just build, and then we get a little slap on the hand, and it's okay. There's a part of me saying, ah, and then on the other hand, it seems like, wow, there are bigger. Fish to fry and.
So to adjust, that comments are very reasonable comments, the owner is on Zoom right now, raised hand already. Um, also, country zoning board, not a pleasant thing for anybody, um, I mean, not for me, but for. To hire somebody, it is a expensive process, and that process anybody's open to go through. And everybody would much rather go to building partners, doing part, tells them, just they're able to build it one foot smaller. And. They will do that, that problem, the owner is, under.
Would you like to speak? Hi, um, yes, I'll unmute you, okay? You have to unmute, I think you have to unmute yourself.
Okay, I'm, thank you, I'm, thank you, I just wanna, okay, thanks. I just want to share a drop of, of background, um, I myself, I'm a law-abiding citizen, I. I'm driving for ten, twenty years, I don't have a single moving violation. Um, the only time that I appeared in court was to do my jury duty, I'm a hard-working person, I work two jobs, I'm. I social work in the community, I do a lot of community work, I'm a district professor at, at, where it's by the school of social work. I'm not a construction guy, I don't understand the construction. And I hired this guy, he did different decks, and I told him I need a wraparound. I, I have nothing from this extra feat, I just wanted to connect the two porches. Um, he, he, he told me he'll build, he'll build everything the code, they'll go through the, the process of getting a permit. I'm a little bit naive, I trust workers, and um, I wasn't upstate anymore. Um, because my, my place doesn't let the building, the construction to happen when, when the residents were there. I was um, down in Brooklyn, I had no clue um, that he did it a, a feet longer um, until I got the violation, and then I got motion of all. I, I honestly, he told me he'll do everything like the code, I, I have nothing from the extra feet, but also hadn't have any money to get it down. To be honest, um, like I said, I never, I never a single moving violation, I have no late tags bills. I, I'm a very hard-working citizen, I do a lot of community work, I, 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 I'm actually now by mental health conference, I'm about, I'm. Doing a little bit more of awareness within the community, um, and I'm just not a, I'm not savvy with those things, and he just. He didn't finish the job fully, um, I have a loss with her, he didn't, the pain do correctly. That's um, but, makes, I totally understand your frustration, and I can't, like, it makes sense, because from, from your end, like, why not be. As they would say, be a mensch, and do it like a normal person, and apply it the way, what's the point of getting just another feat? And, and I feel the same, like, I feel your frustration, but it just, it's, on, on my end, I asked him to everything by the code. Um, I, I, I didn't, I, I, actually, I don't need this, and if it would cost me a thousand bucks, it would be easier to them. Than hiring Moishe and coming to the board, it'll be easy, but I didn't have the six and a half thousand bucks, so that's. I'm just some, where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you, huh? Is there anybody, is there anybody else on Zoom would like to speak on this? All right, you're free.
With the department portion on this?
And I take this, sir.
Okay, um, all payment? With this, uh, the public portion, they close all three uh, items. And now we come to board comments.
Great, I think, we, we, last meeting, we spoke through so many of these items. Um, so, I don't really have, the only question that I have really should, wish I is, um. If you were to stand within that twenty five percent expansion. Um, plan, rather than the twenty eight percent, what would that do to the use variance? How would that change the use variance request?
It wouldn't.
It wouldn't. Because it wouldn't change the, the dimension. Okay, okay.
You're speaking to which?
Uh, Irvington Estates.
Switch to our area, and then which one is used.
So, so the, the whole, the state that the, the county changed all this on us in the last few weeks, so. Stuff that we've been hearing as area variances, they say we should be looking at it as use variances. So they kind of threw a loop, they kind of threw us for uh, uh, the way we've been doing stuff for the last however many years, fifteen years. They saying we should be looking at it as a, as a different, not an area, but a use variance, so.
I think that it's other way, not that's area variances for um, twenty five percent increase, I think the dollars were, I think, doesn't say we should use that.
Yeah, so every.
I had a hard time when it happens.
Yeah, so because it's a non-conforming use. Um, anything that's a variance technically is against the use, because the use is in essence chilled from growth. So, rather than being, even if it is an area variance otherwise, or allowed, since it's not conforming, it has to go through. The use variance test, because it's not allowed, if that makes sense.
To that, that, that is. But in reality, what we're talking about is not whether or not we're going to change something that we packing. Uh, house to a restaurant, where you, they would have the higher bar, um. Uh, the higher standard to meet, because we are radically changing our.
But ask him for a use variance is, is, is got higher, higher. Standards than area variance, so.
But this might be a use variance that'll switch.
Yeah, so I mean, it's a use variance, because non-conform uses aren't supposed to be extended, so it's a higher test.
Have to call it a use variance.
And it has to be the test for experience.
I thought that is the mid fact, that's what I'm.
Yeah.
Alright, so, but that, that also, quite after that, indicate that we have done an extra amount of diligence.
Mm-hmm.
Correct, yeah, because the thought is the town doesn't want the use to be happening, so if it's going to be extended, there has to be a very good reason. You know, so that's why it's the.
And a very good reason over here is, this is somebody that has.
Has a week's rent, and has an eight.
So, well, I, I, just to go back here for a second, I don't understand why, if it was just to stay within a twenty five percent expansion. It would be less than three hundred and six square foot addition, no?
Um, oh yeah, it'll be about that, yeah, square foot. Yes, it would be, um. You want to turn the square footage, what it would be, that.
I just wanted to.
So that I can make a difference to the law coverage.
Separation. Okay, if it's not going to be, okay, what I will say is.
Yes, for, for, yeah, there's, there's two different ones here, there's use and, and area variances.
For, for me, the issue here is that we're looking at another not-conforming used bungalow colony. We're looking at one request coming through, and that might lead to many more requests. I have an issue with the idea that we're going to grant a request to one bungalow colony. Uh, one bungalow uh, family to, to do this, and then how would we say no in the future? I don't think that that's feasible or possible. I also think that there are other ways for this to be addressed, right, like there's other solutions. Um, which I understand is part of the um, the area variance request. But it's also part of the use variance request, that like, this is, um. You know, this is a hardship that feels. And, you know, I, it, it's hard to say self-created, because we're all aging and all, you know, all the business, business, it's all entity, but. There's other ways of addressing the problem, finding another place for the, um, age to live.
So, we did some of financials for that, 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 um.
Yes.
Situation.
Yes.
Um, financials.
I look to.
Somebody has some help, sure, yeah, um, it's going to be about ten thousand dollars, uh, summer. If you're renting it, um, I have from the contract desk, maybe without forty thousand dollars.
So that it's almost cheaper for them to rent.
Also, it's going to be cheaper for them in the first three years, probably, you know, in the first three years, it's probably cheaper for them, whereas it'd be going up a lot more. Um, also, it's not so practical, on a practical basis, to have. Someone I think, coming in to practice every day, then somebody who did our night, then somebody, not so practical. Um, next, the next thing to address with your other comment, which is also a fair comment, um, this might come back this. This, this county.
Yeah, I think you need to speak louder.
If it might come back for this county, it's not going to be for the same request, it's going to be to, to increase the lock coverage from thirty two percent to. Thirty three point one, whatever it is, and that's a new request, it's not the same request.
Right, but the, the challenge is that it's within a bungalow, we've, we've faced this with other bungalow communities, where there's. A precedent set, when one family comes forward and says, we, we got a variance request from town. Why don't you go and find out if you can get a variance request, and all of a sudden, what these, what seems like a very small lot coverage, um, you know, increase. Becomes significantly greater each and each request that comes forward, so that's my, my concern.
What Jen is saying is that even though, in reality, the amount is very minute. However, it does establish, you get either, a missus as great as a model, you know, it's going to. Create a window of opportunity for someone to come through with something that will be much more radical. And so our, um, the letter is. Were, are we, maybe with our general Ross, and for something, I need to go ask. Are we then opening ourselves up to? This is an aging, it's, it's an aging population in an aging province. And, and, and how would you know, I mean, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't wrestled with this feature. No, quite a while. How are we going, yeah, it's, yeah, it's, uh. How can you prevent, how can we keep it just this? And I, 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 here, I ask for my colleagues to, you know, is there any wisdom, is there any way in which we can? Uh, you know. So, kind of bring this in, or you know, um, cut it off, or you know, surround it, boundary it, you know, etc. But a way that uh, we won't actually, because we don't have a master plan, Irvington. Irvington is the, the states like we come out of stocks, where it's open to having season, we've been worked. And, and so it's, what you're asking for is very reasonable, but we also know that people will, will pick up. On the smallest decision that we make, uh, you know, this could be very generous and logical, and yet it could be.
So, man, Dylan, is it possible to have um, some sort of cap on? Is, is there something that they were able to say, let's say thirty three point five, then that, is there some sort with that, uh?
Yeah, I mean, that'd be, right. Yeah, that would be something in the zoning code, but, I mean, I guess theoretically, you know, the uh. The board of Irvington Estates could, I mean, theoretically bind itself to whatever they want to, um, it wouldn't just be one. You know, one member of uh, the complex, but.
Is it possible to be a condition on the?
Socially, it was more of aging, the one, yeah, the, the one. And then they're going to increase uh, the, the size of, of the unit. Um, a lot of people could wait that one day with the same kind of situation, we could have another grandmother, another grandfather. And that's the dilemma, how do we see this and create or state in a way that it is unique? To this situation, and then it does not become something that others can put up, get a hook into. And then use it for their ass, when they feel that they have a personal social, familial need.
I'm interested, I mean, for me, this is really hard, but I'll read exactly what you're saying about it, I am interested to understand. If it was to stay within a twenty five percent expansion, which is within the rights to build. What would it need for the third item that we're looking at, the use variance reduced, and for me, adding a deck feels. Like, you know, it would, it could be removed, if we're staying within twenty five percent expansion, how much actually is that? Like, you know, it would, it could be removed, if we're staying within twenty five percent expansion, how much actually is that that square foot addition? How would that impact the setbacks? That's very impressive, so it's too deep, I mean, that's still in increasing lot coverage, but what does that need also for the separation if we're not adding debt? Right, like are there other ways?
Logical for us to assume that we're not going to find the situation in the future, then come to. It's still about such a small increase.
Yeah, I just also, even if it is a small increase, it's incrementally, there's how many homes, there's a hundred plus homes. So this is, we're looking at each place.
See, I wanna say, I would like to say that this is so unique. That we they we won't see another one like this, but it's not about seeing another one.
It is, it's still a part of the precedent within bungalow community itself. I feel comfortable voting, is there anything, are you all, so be another question?
Yeah, I mean, I feel very comfortable, you know, uh, in this situation, I don't.
Yeah, I know, I wish that there was a easy way to be like, of course, this should happen, that this should happen within the right, within the balance of what can be built. According to the.
I want it to happen, but I want it to happen with its.
Yeah, well, and also in a way that is within the use, you know, it's like, if you were to increase twenty five percent, that's one thing. That's still, we need to see the the block coverage. It's, yeah, for me, this is really hard, but I think we should go through the criteria, because that always makes it clear and.
Alright, well, so I I I mean, we had three variants.
Yes, and that's if you each one of them set every. So I would.
Yeah, if it only have three, then still don't do two.
Yeah, I think if if you received everything but the deck, you probably.
That's good, but also you said that twenty five percent, you wrote the, this time it those, I would like to reduce it from. To make it, build twenty five percent extension for twenty eight.
The lot coverage, yes, but as far as the uh, going over twenty five percent.
Okay, so probably they'll be here, um, now, when are we voting on first?
The area variance to increase twenty five percent expansion of building to twenty eight percent. So we'll go through the arrow variants.
But that would be a use variance here, so the use variance test, even though it has to do with area.
The agenda is incorrect, okay.
You're using the use variance formula around? Do we have a new statement?
We might want to adopt it, um, just as, I don't know, pass it over, I think there.
It's it's similar to what we have, but this is a new version where we're gonna go to probably, it's just. Uh, we shouldn't probably.
If he's, then it doesn't. All four have to be positive.
The first question, can this uh, be realized, uh, can I realize reasonable return? The use variance has caused unnecessary hardship as follows. It cannot be realized reasonable return because.
Uh, the financials say that in four years supposedly, that would cost them a lot of money. That being said, who knows what the situation would be in four years, for me, the answer is no. That, I want to make sure that I'm answering that correctly, that I do think that.
In four years of renting.
And where have them renting the house, um. Possibly getting another aid. Um, and then car service being back and forth every day. That's gonna not be, it would be.
A separate house for the one person.
That's definitely option, yeah. So.
Don't people move every day when their family expands?
Yeah, I think we should also, we're voting at this stage, we're kind of ended the public comment, the board comment, is that right?
Yeah, right now, almost, you know, I don't have a remote comment, going through the elements of that.
Alright, so.
Can you ask the question again?
The question is, is it, it's just, it's an awkward one, it's. You know, and there is an unnecessary hardship because. Um. Is there an unnecessary hardship? I actually raised a question that it just, I I I don't know how to. This is all for the problem with these variants, um, forms, if this one question. Use variance is caused by unnecessary hardship as follows. Because there is a, uh, um, it it cannot re-realize reasonable return, you're saying it can. Uh.
The big answer that we want to put down is yes.
Yeah, but.
I think that's right, I I'm I'm, I can understand if the question is asking. What I think is that this is not the only.
Way for it to happen.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say.
But that's not the question, it doesn't say, is this the only way?
But that this is a reasonable return.
Read the question again, sorry, I was.
Use variance is caused unnecessary hardship as follows, where it cannot re-realize, it it realizes a reasonable return because.
It can.
Yeah, so if if it cannot.
If there's no other way.
Then you would say, yes, then use variance is good, but here. No, it's already been enough, so it would be yes if it does, so what Jen was saying would be yes, it can. Otherwise.
There are other ways, yes, so it'd be.
He's been informed written the same way, there's a word differently.
The alleged hardship is not applied to a substantial portion of the district or neighborhood.
It does, there's gonna be many people who will face the same challenge.
There'll be others who come forward with this new question.
Yeah.
So, um, yes, yes, yes. You're requesting use law alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
No.
Because.
I mean, it's a no.
It's not going to alter the essential character of the complex.
Yeah.
It's gonna not be prompt, so you're saying no?
No.
I would say no as well. The alleged hardship has not been self-created.
It has, yes.
It has.
So, um, we have. Three yeses and one no.
No, the motion doesn't pass.
Well, this is just laying out the elements, so then you would neck deck and then vote on. So now you've let, you've laid out all the pieces, so you do your your neck deck and then you say whether you're. Yes or no for the actual twenty five or twenty eight.
But for a use, for a use variance, doesn't it not matter because that each one has to be a yes?
Yeah, I think, I always like to do it anyway, just. Clear record and felt suspenders.
So, negative. And a motion. So then, I'm, I'm meaning that, um, that this, that not pass, is not acceptable.
You understand me? Okay, now, uh, the paper. And so it's, this one is.
According to multiple democratic sources, this is happening all of a sudden, everyone said it would happen gradually and then all at once, and that's what's happening. According to my sources, President Biden has agreed to step down as a Democratic nominee. Probably will happen as early as this weekend, a speech has been drafted for him. He will continue. Uh, I'm told, endorse Vice President Harris as his successor.
Oh. It was on one of the persons, uh, that didn't mute, I got.
Yeah, because the point one, I assume includes both the building and the deck. Fresh, would the deck included correct?
No, the deck could be, they still build the deck, but the deck wasn't a separate ask.
Yes, that's not.
It was just listed on there for some reason.
Okay.
So.
Again, next one. Mayor is Burke.
Uh, for me, this is uh, an actual advantage to the community and to the neighborhood. Where there's safety that will be enforced because uh, there's a a cabin or a. You know, and something that indicates that this is property that is owned, therefore there will be less trespassing, less danger. Uh, that people can incur um, on the property itself, so I see that. The benefit of use variance is um, high, and as I said last time, I would, I like to add the condition. That as long as it is not used or sold as a short-term rental, that is the condition I would like to add.
Thank you, um, if you go by the property now, not her, she Joe Passer, they definitely did make it look much nicer than.
His is a use variance. No, it's okay. No, no, so this is this, like, this is definitely, this is definitely a, this is definitely for this one as a use variance. Because the hunting efficient cabins are allowed in R E C and egg zones in the town of Fallsburg. Uh, they don't say anything about our zones, this was once, this property was once an egg, uh, or an ours. Uh, R E C zone, it was changed in the zoning update of two thousand eighteen because the. Uh, the property next door went from, uh, went to high-density residential, which is uh. Which is West Park, so at the same time, they they put the, they adopted the same zoning. So on the opposite, on all sides of this property, it's R E C zoning, except for.
This person. Yeah, it's one of those things where it's. Stop at the river and take all the parcels that connect to the. So, so, but everything surrounding it is R E C that would allow this type of. So the neighborhood generally, um, is, would fit into this, but for its parcel.
Yeah.
But the one of building. Only one sewer lines. Did you say that we push it back?
No, no, so the water, the the water sewer lines are on right, almost smack through the middle.
Yes, so we don't want to go on top of that.
So no, so.
Move it back.
Then, um, it's middle, the other way, the other middle. The the wrong way, the.
Yeah, so we're gonna be, I believe he's gonna be placing the cabin in a place where it's not that sound.
Yeah, going to the west part, um, west part of the city, you know, through the property, entire front of the property, people will request access, they have a building ground here, people will request access. So that would be here.
So where's, where's you gonna put this?
Five feet away, that we requested that he leaves it five feet away from all water and sewer lines. Um, there is no, currently he's mentioned G B W, meaning that if they ever need, they could just up the entire property, if they ever.
Between what we're gonna put and that one.
More time? Twenty.
It's your.
I don't have a rule.
You don't want to know what you leave the best.
That would, don't need a separate, because the lot one, you need a separate variance, if you're too close to the lot line, they'll need a separate variance.
Do you know exactly where is?
I.
We're gonna work with them.
Yeah, I mean, we will work it out.
If he gets approved for it, the town, between the building department, the water and sewer department. We're gonna go down there, mark out all our lines and everything and make sure he doesn't put his cabin on top, that's what we're gonna do, so. Yeah, exactly.
Only thing that we need to vote on is the proximity to the river, which is A B B, and that the county doesn't have an issue with.
Correct.
Yeah.
The county didn't have an issue with.
He can't, in order to maintain setbacks, either, you see the setbacks the other side of the property. And to order to maintain the easements, he actually can't build a hundred feet from the river.
That's what I have for this. Now, there are two, there are two things, one thing, a cabin has to be more than a hundred feet from a river. And the never sink river has uh, special requirements that you can't build within a hundred feet of the Neverton River. Not that that's true.
That's not where we are.
That you would see that we're going, that we're going near variance.
We are, we are voting.
Yes, I'm not sure if it's two separate areas, we need a two separate code, same thing, I'll be able to see the way. Um.
It's an area variance and a use variance.
I'm not sure if it's two separate area variances. Maybe an area variance for the town, and then as far as being a hundred. Booked in the network, so is that how we present it? So I'll, since it's the same, I asked, it's just different sections, we should just make sure, when you go over, that's clear that the area variance. Applies to both the town code for never sink setback as well as setbacks allowed for hunting efficient cabin. Just to make sure we're putting on both of them.
Was it the same?
Because they're both the same area variance, just under different sections.
I think we should go.
Okay, so we're having to move the use areas, changes from, uh, a, uh.
To allow the hunting fishing cabin in a, in a, in an R zone.
Which also part of the rules, uh, of occupation.
Correct.
And or could, but as a condition, I know that or want to as as that not be a threat to my health.
I'd like to make sure we got that.
Yeah.
Right, so that we are, this is the use variance for hunting and fishing cabin. That will remain exclusively, uh, for the use of this one person, that will not be, uh, rented as. For this person, the family, yeah, for this, for the proprietor, yeah, but but not. It it cannot be put on the platform, alright, uh, so, uh, for these variants. Um, it cannot realize a reasonable return. Because.
No, it cannot.
Are we ready? Do you know what I mean? Yes or no?
We'll have a real answer.
So you're thinking, yes, or?
Yeah, the fact.
You're you're, you're saying it can realize a reasonable return?
You're, you're, no, okay. Alright, the alleged hardship is not a part of substantial portion of the district or neighborhood.
No.
You request the use will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood.
No.
No.
Yes, you know as well, the alleged hardship has not been self-created.
For me, it's. For me, it's yes, it has been.
Created, so I agree that's. Well. Now, we, um, put on the, uh, motion, well, uh, in total.
So I have a motion with, uh.
A negative declaration.
Yeah, negative, exactly. Negative deck?
Yeah, a motion.
Sir.
Okay. All fair?
Alright.
Okay. Uh, and now the, uh.
Motion to allow the hunting and fishing cabin with the condition that it be, um, for personal use and never, never to be allowed to be a short-term rental as the, like, on the property.
Okay.
Um, okay, uh, all in favor?
I.
Fine, uh, Jill, are you writing that down?
Yeah.
Because I'm not right now, you've got the, oh, the Vanessa.
Now to, uh, I've been pulling together.
And you don't put your resolution.
Yeah, so, especially for anything that goes back to planning boards, that, that, alright.
Oh, yeah, so that's our use variance for, uh, Mayor Rosenberg, now we have to go to the area.
Correct, right, area variance, really, setback.
Back. There are two things. It's, it's one setback, two different codes, discussed, done, two different codes, that.
It's been one vote. It's one vote, like, it's thirteen, uh.
It really have, so I'm a little confused too, the, the hunting and fishing cabin has a hundred foot from the river.
This, um, main fishing cabin has to be a hundred feet away from any river.
Correct, it, so that's the code we're looking for, what's the second?
Never sink river, not above the Never Sink River.
Oh, there's a net separate Never Sink River code?
One section, so many.
I didn't, I didn't even know that was in there, honestly.
Yes.
I didn't realize that was in there too. So the, the Never Sink allows you to build within the hundred feet of the river, but there's certain things you might have to do in order to, to, uh, blood prepare it, in other words.
That's. Getting the zoning was, if you wanted those to the districts, the Never Sink River District.
Can we create a condition for that? Because that, that's a concern to me, if there's a specific, you know, and clearly there's a reason for the protection of the river. Can we create a condition that can't be sewer, um? I guess it's town water, it's town water and sewer.
Yeah, there would be, no, there's no sewer, yeah. The only restrictions, that, that, there's restrictions for, for the hundred foot, if you build within the hundred foot of the town river, which were, which, which there may be some, some, uh, stuff that the E C might have some input with some tying it down properly, fencing it down, they don't want it to float away, it's essentially what it is. Uh, we're not worried about damage here, really, because it's not like a insurable structure type thing, like, we have all these, a lot of the codes that we have for the distances from the rivers and all that stuff is for insurance reasons, in other words, the insurance companies don't want us to build a structure within a hundred feet of, of, uh, of a river because of flooding.
Yeah.
Uh.
Also, um.
Correct, correct. Correct.
And up here, whatever you feel.
In other words, this structure, if it was a habitable home, single-family home, if he was gonna build it in this proximity to the river, he would have to have a, uh, a flood elevation site, and then he would have to build everything within over two foot over the historic flood levels. In this case, since it's not a CO level habitable structure, he can build it at his own risk, he can build it right at going ground level if he wants, but, uh, it's, because it's not like a i- if there's a flood coming, you're not gonna stay there. It's not like it's your house and you're living there, it's a, it's a, it's a leisure cabin.
Okay, alright, so let's go through the, uh, whether an entire world change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, um, that will be detrimental to nearby properties.
No.
Yeah.
They know? The benefit, uh, sought be achieved by the applicant. If I want to go, that's the word here, be achieved by the applicant, by another method other than the area.
We've looked at all the options, no?
No.
Whether the request, the, the area variance is substantial?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse af- uh, affect or impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district.
Oh.
And, um, was the alleged, which will be relevant, but not necessarily to put back variance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and now we have a motion.
Negative declaration.
Negative, yeah, good.
Motion.
Fair. Um, fair enough?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, now the motion.
I motion, um, to allow the U D P variance.
Yeah. I would just qualify it for both sections for the, uh, Never Sink overlay district and then the, uh, hunting and fishing cabin, uh, section of the code, so covers the.
Both potential variants.
For the Never Sink District and the town.
Yes.
I have a motion for that.
Alright, um, so we want to state the motion exactly, go over the.
Go write it up in a resolution.
We have some. Please, uh, um.
I have a motion.
Okay. Motion to approve.
To approve.
Can I, um, before you do your final voting, this, you might want to do a condition that the twenty foot variance here only pertains to the hunting and fishing cabin on the parcel, that way, if at some point in the future a house is built, they would have to come back and.
That's a great condition.
Just to.
Yeah.
Anything change?
That's, uh.
No, the various. I did. Okay, alright, so now, um.
Aye.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second as a matter of fact.
Okay, second as a matter of fact, and all, all in favor as a man?
Aye.
Thank you. Um.
This is, this is, we need something else.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, my name is Still Mo Sha. I mean, that, uh.
Very brave of you, that. I mean.
Aye.
Okay. Alright, so now, uh, we have, um, Mr. Freed's, uh, situation. Uh, and this is an area variance.
Me, this, this is, I really appreciate Mr. Freed showing up to the meeting and speaking to, to your experience, and sorry that you had the experience that you did with the contractor, that's unfortunate. Uh, this is an issue because it is certainly not a substantial request, but it is one that could be precedent setting. However, I feel like I've heard enough from Mr. Freed to feel like my hope is that in saying yes here tonight, it's not because we're permitting this, but because simply we understand the hardship that you should be going through, and my personal request to you would be to speak with your neighbors and ensure that they're not using other, um, they're not using the same contractor for additional, um, development, that they're not gonna have to go through this process themselves by building outside of what's in the code. And so as a social worker, as a community member, my request is please, please bring this information forward. For me, that's.
Thank you, I actually got four people not to use them. And the word of that and the development, nobody is using it, so, yes, I, I appreciate that.
I was wondering whether or not a block this could actually happen, because, you know, I mean, as part of these.
I wouldn't say any names.
Yeah, I, I, I'll be, but it's a, it's a, it's a.
So I was wondering, why instead of hiring a lawyer, you didn't hire a lawyer, and sue the guy that did this to? And make him.
I. I, unfortunately, I have four jobs. And I, I, I'm not enough. I, I do private work, I supervise ironic crisis line, the hundred volunteers, and I teach as a adjunct professor. And I don't have the energy and the time to be really busy with it. Um, so, and this is why it happens. But, uh, I'm not a fighter.
Well, you're here, fine. Would it be a reasonable return if he could get, if he was legal action against this person? If what you're facing is a seven thousand dollar, um, loss? Um.
I think that, that'd be a, you know, a question for him to, you know, ponder, but not really part of our process, yeah, for the area variance, yes, coming to.
It's, uh, you know, it's, uh, it's, uh, the often. So that's not, it's not under our.
Yes, it's an area variance.
Okay, but, alright, alright, whether or not, so now we're gonna look through the question. Uh, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood detrimental to the nearby properties?
No.
And I say no, can the benefits, uh, side be achieved by the applicant, by another method other than the area variance?
Yeah, no. Hmm, no.
I say no. Whether the requested area variance is substantial?
No.
No, no. Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or the district?
No.
Will, will that, if it will be self-created?
Yeah.
Different person, did the work. Okay. Negative deck?
In motion for negative declaration.
Sir.
Okay, all in favor now?
Aye.
And, and now, maybe, could be motion itself, uh, that, uh, propose that, uh, the, um, fourteen feet. And for our future. Fourteen feet, the, the distance between, between that to be allowed, um.
Can you make some progress?
On the motion, yeah. All, and then, then we are in favor of the granting area variance that, that would allow for it, say at fourteen feet.
And my motion to grant the area variance to let it stay at fourteen feet with the understanding that this isn't ideally precedent setting, this is more so the understanding of the, the situation.
I don't think that would shake. If not.
Yeah, you gotta vote with your heart, you do what you.
Yeah, we'll vote no, I heard it. Have to call.
So then the motion does not pass?
No, you need all three of the yeses.
But I make the vote. Alright, thank you.
What do you understand? On all of you, please, that I should do. One thing should be done, though, without permits.
Hundred percent. I mean.
I have a lot of all along. Every time.
Whether it's recourse by other means.
Yes. Mr. Freed, we hope you take that recourse in whatever way.
We really feel for you, uh, and, uh, it is not the. And, uh.
Is there, uh.
There's always the ghost, there always is the ghost of.
Any other business, um, I I guess for me, the, I gave the, uh, chair a couple new forms, I'll email them around, I think they'll make things easier voting wise.
Okay.
Um, so I'll try to send those around tomorrow.
Okay. Motion to adjourn in the meeting?
Okay.
Favor.
And.
Also, they.